I have called the meeting, so all of you please rise for the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. First item on the agenda is student reports. Do we have any student reports tonight? None?
None.
Okay. Next item, hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Okay. Secretary's report, approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of March 19th, 2015. Members have had an opportunity to read those. Any changes or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like the questions, I asked three questions to the superintendent at the March 19th meeting, and I would like them stated as they were asked. Would you like me to submit them to the secretary or say them?
On March 19th?
Yes, the March 19th meeting.
Okay. Why don't you give them, you can give them in writing to the secretary and stuff, and we'll enter them into the record, and we can have an approval based upon those being entered into the record if that's okay with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so Heather will enter into the changes that she would like to the secretary. Given that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approval of the minutes of the budget hearing meeting of March 24th, 2015. Any additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There's one statement under opening statements, it says the budget was then brought to East Brookfield. East Brookfield could not accept as there were no options for additional revenue. I actually called Mr. Fayard today for clarification on this, and East Brookfield was able to support the assessment for the proposed initial budget. However, if the budget continued to increase year after year by the same amount, then East Brookfield would need an override. I just wanted to clarify that point.
All right, if, into those into the record as well, Missy, and we can have a vote for approval with that condition. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approval of minutes of the school committee meeting of March 24th, 2015. Any additions or deletions? If not, motion to approve.
Motion approved, Mr.
Motion by Mr. Nodquist, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, so voted. Last, approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting regarding Lake Street School closing on March 26th, 2015. Any additions or deletions? If not, a motion to approve.
Moved.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kurt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item is the financial report, Mr. Suter.
You all received the school committee expenditure report. If you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer it. And I believe you also got a copy of the proposed transfer request form. If anybody has any questions on that, I'll be glad to answer it.
Any questions in regards to the expenditure report, the transfers?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to accept the expenditure report and to approve the transfers as listed.
Motion made by Mr. Cludy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Napton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Opposed, so voted. There is no unfinished business under new business, Lake Street School air quality report, Mr. Feeney. We, as you recall, our hearing on Lake Street School, we told folks then at that time that there would be another assessment done by Mr. Feeney's organization, which he has done. He has his report, which he will present here tonight. We'll ask that, let Mr. Feeney make his presentation of his full report and stuff, and then if there's anything that he does uncover, that anyone has a question at, we'll entertain at that point. So, Mr. Feeney?
Um...
Were you gonna do, you're doing PowerPoint? We'll take a seat down there. Please put your mics down.
May I?
And push your chairs in, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Feeney. I'm the director of Massachusetts Department of Health and National Health Program. I'm doing this work for, uh, we understand, and I'm using a Republican state. How's that? Better? Okay. I'm for being my girl. Just happened. Anyhow, one of the things that I, that we do is evaluate which is indoor air quality publically across Massachusetts. We, the program's been operating since 1993. We have made several visits to this particular, this particular facility. And just to get a little background, next slide please. What I'm gonna do is to go over the background, different parameters that we measured, discuss the findings, the different recommendations we've made, and then I'll open the floor for any questions. Next slide, please. Just to give an idea, we do roughly about a hundred of stuff, it's all across Massachusetts. I personally have been... Hello? Would be better if I just use only these points to the side. Anyhow, I'll try to go over. We do about a hundred, a hundred of these different evaluations across Massachusetts every year in public buildings. That includes schools, state office spaces, courthouse, public libraries, everything you can possibly think of. Next slide, please. So, what we're operating under is departments enabling the statute. We advise government concerning location and other sanitary conditions of public buildings. We advise we cannot order. So under this, what we do is we provide technical assistance to local government and state government with regard to these type of conditions that we find in buildings. Next slide, please. When we look at, when we look at a building... How do I do this? Plug in either? No, I mean, you can use one of those. Yeah, this way. All right, well, I'll do the podium.
How's that? Better? See, I tend to walk around and use my hands a lot, so I'll feel a little tethered. Anyhow, what we do when we look at these different types of buildings is that we do an evaluation, and we look at three different things, basically. We look at the ventilation system, we look for microbial growth, mostly water damage, and then we look for different respiratory irritants that we can find of a non-microbial nature, which basically means everything else in the building. Next slide, please. Whenever we look at indoor air quality, it basically comes down to three separate issues. The design of the building, the capital maintenance of the building, and then what people do inside the building. Next slide, please. So that, for instance, one of the things we look at is the ventilation system. We look at the design. Now, this is a picture from the, from the school itself. That's the garage door, and I have absolutely no idea why the architect decided to put the air intake for one of the classrooms right above the door. See that grate, metal grate there? That should never have been put there in the first place, because anybody who's using the garage, though, if that system is operating, it's now in the building. Next slide. Then there's issues with regard to poor maintenance. I'm not talking about custodial staff, I'm talking about maintenance of the different components of the vent, of the building itself. Usually the HVAC system, the roof, the exterior walls, the foundation, the, the heating system, et cetera. Next slide. And then there are things that happen inside the building in and of themselves that are done, that can novel air quality. For instance, this is a picture that we took of this building. That's an exhaust system in a classroom that's been blocked up by different materials that are stored there. The system has to have exhaust systems running, because that house is how things leave the building, that are accumulating inside. So by having that, it doesn't work. Next slide. So the building was basically built in two different iterations, once in 1957 and 1977. Next slide. So, one of the questions that came up that I saw in the media is, is that the building was described as a sick building. Now, the thing is, is that a sick building, as I understand it, is a building where you have either a part of a building, or, or the entire building, where you have people who are experiencing symptoms that they believe that are going on in that building. It could be widespread, but the thing is, is that, and you cannot see this behind that slide, most importantly, different agencies who establish this definition, EPA and the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health, say you may have an indoor air quality issue if you have more than 20% of the people in the building experiencing symptoms. So, just doing a rough set of math, there's roughly about 350 people in that building? Am I close? So that means that we'll have at least 70 occupants expressing some sort of concern or symptoms inside that building. And talking with the staff, and talking with the, with the nurse, the medical staff in the facility, that doesn't seem to be what's happening in this building. So, looking at symptoms, we then look at the environment in and of itself to see if there's something of an issue there. Next slide. One of the other things that we looked at was the pediatric asthma rates for Spencer, the school itself, and compared it against the state average. Now, Massachusetts roughly 11% is the average of the students that you'd find in any, in any city or town who have asthma. Spencer as a town is roughly around 9%, and the school is roughly at 9% as well. So you're below the state average for asthma, so that would be another indicator that would seem to be that this is not an issue with this building. Next slide. Now, the other thing is, is that the school building authority has different regulations in it, and one of the things that they have, and I highlighted here, is that when buildings are built brand-new, they are supposed to have an expected, an expected lifespan of at least 50 years. I don't know where this number came from, I found it 10 years ago. I don't think it just came out of the ether, I think this has been around for quite some time, ever since schools were being built. So, using that number as a benchmark, next slide. I'll talk a little bit about that later. So that, we did air sampling, and what I want to talk about is different things about the ventilation system in and of itself. We do carbon dioxide testing, I'll get into that. Carbon dioxide testing is not carbon monoxide. Right now, we all are exhaling carbon dioxide, okay? It is used by the ventilation industry as a measure to see how well air exchanges in a building. And I'll go more into that. We do temperature measurements, relative humidity, we check for crocs of combustion, mostly carbon monoxide. That's the one thing in, in any building that would make me be very concerned. And so what I usually advise people, if they see me in the building walking around, they see me running out, follow me. Because I'm concerned for everyone in the building, but I'm also concerned for me as well. And then we look for respiratory, sources of respiratory irritants in the building by doing particle testing. Now, there's a type of testing that's called PM 2.5 testing. That is a particle that's small enough to get into the lungs down to where the air exchange happens, this can, it can be a source of much respiratory irritation. We do this testing as well, and we do this suite of testing in every building that we do an evaluation, and we did it at the Lake Street School in 2006, 2014 and '15. Next slide. So, the ventilation system, HVAC system at the Lake Street School, next slide. It is basically what is known as mostly a unit ventilator system. And basically what it is, is that at the base of the unit are two vents, one in the outside of the building to bring in fresh air, one that's on the base of it on the inside that brings in air from the room. Inside that unit are a set of louvers that will control the fresh air to the return air, the room air, which will then be drawn through a filter, then brought, drawn through the heating element, and then into the fan, and then ejected through the top. That's how they work. Next slide. They also have components. Now, the one on the left, that's the type that was installed in 1957. The one on the right was installed in 1977, they're both unit ventilators. Now, to try to put some perspective into how old these units are, the one on the left was installed when President Eisenhower was president. How many people in the audience were li, were born when Eisenhower was president? Raise your hands. How many people here own a car that was built in 1957 or earlier? Raise your hands, and are driving it right now. Now imagine, 26 rooms with each of these units, and the other one was installed during the Carter administration. So what you have in, in this building is around 26 different pieces of equipment that have fan belts, that have motors, that have louvers, that have controls in them, all these different components that are roughly 60 or 40 years old. And that creates a problem with control of air and ventilation. Next slide. This is what the ventilation system looks like on the roof. There are rooftop exhaust vents, the one on the left was installed in 1957, that is as ancient as you can get as a design that you see in these buildings. On the right is the more modern mushroom-type turbine-type system. But one thing, can we all agree this was probably the most brutal winter that in memory? Because not only did we have the snow load, and if, I am 6'1", and I believe the amount of snow that we got is about this high, couple of different things how that impacts on the building. One is, is that these vents are about this high, so that they were likely buried in the middle of the winter, and, and that the extreme cold after you had the snow causes havoc to mechanical systems. Next slide. So, we did temperature readings, all three, and I'm gonna, I put all these, they're all within the normal range for temperature, that we would mostly find for comfort, a little bit above or a little bit below, more people would say that they're hot or they're cold. Humidity, outdoor, we use the, we use the number of 40 to 60% as comfort range, but unfortunately, we all live in Massachusetts, and frequently in the winter, on a cool, cold day, we will get a humidity at 30% or below. So that is in and of itself is going to be extremely dry. But during this time, we found that, you know, some of these times, we saw in 2006 it was within the comfort range, but in 2015 it was, it was below 40. So, the building's dry. Can we all stipulate that, that the building is, who works here in the building? Is the building dry? Yes? Yes. Next slide, please. Now, below 20% humidity, you can have that dry air cause symptoms of eye irritation, dry skin, respiratory irritation, it can exacerbate pre-existing skin conditions, it can also lead to the aeration of dust and cause volatile organic compounds, different chemicals that evaporate more rapidly. So the problem with this is, is that you can't control humidity. We do not recommend putting more water into a building, because, one, humidifiers, real, it's not gonna make us, make really a whole lot of difference in the building. Secondly, is that I've never seen a standalone humidifier taken care of properly in any building I've ever seen, ever seen put in. And third, what you get out of it depends on what you put into it. If you put in tap water, tap water contains a lot of different minerals and water treatment materials like that, that are respiratory irritants, so you can actually be adding water to the environment and causing symptoms. And then if it's a hot type of system, that can actually grow bacteria that can be, be problematic, so we don't recommend that. But what we do do is recommend that dust control be done by either wet wiping or, or mopping with, or using a heap of filter equipped vacuum cleaner, or, and to have the ventilation system be adequate, and to operate it while the building is open. Next slide, please. So, every report that we have written on this building has this statement, carbon dioxide is not a problem in and of itself, it's a tool. We can go into a building and do air testing for all sorts of different things. The problem is, is that you can come back, get measurements of different chemicals, and they don't mean anything from a toxicological standard, because that's what you find in the outdoor environment naturally. So what you use is carbon dioxide to see how well air comes into the building, dilutes what's going on in the building, and then is physically removed. Now, the thing is, is that if you have a room that doesn't have a ventilation system running adequately, and you put 20 people in it, what happens is that people in and of themselves exhale what we call bioeffluence. Carbon dioxide, water vapor, waste heat, other types of different things. And so, what happens if you're in that room after 20 minutes? It gets hot, it gets uncomfortable, people get sleepy, their eyes get irritated, their nose, it gets irritated. Now, how many people have experienced those symptoms? Raise your hands. Okay? It's what normally happens in the building where the windows are shut, basically. So, we use it as an indicator for how well the ventilation system works. Next slide. So, I've already explained this, next slide. So, just to give you some, some comparison, generally, we use the number 800 or above to indicate that the ventilation system needs to be adjusted. Now, there is disagreement, we are very conservative with our, with our numbers. There are different agencies that set ventilation standards, that use different types of, of indicators. The one that's the most modern is actually done by the American Society for Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, or ASHRAE. They set ventilation standards, they use a number where you're supposed to do a measurement for carbon dioxide outside the building, then add 700, and you get your magic number. That's where the 950 to 3, 1300 comes from. And then, once we start again to work our safety standards, that number rises to 5,000 parts per million over the course of any hour period, and then you start to get, you know, problems when you're at 30,000. I mean, we're talking about an air, you know, an airtight environment where there's no oxygen. That's not the case in this building. Next slide. So we use 800 to indicate the ventilation system needs to be adjusted to bring in more fresh air, or something needs to be adjusted to bring in more fresh air. Next slide. Why? It's because all these different things you can find in any building, that could be sources of respiratory irritation. Now, how many people remember getting a brand-new textbook? You know that smell? That awful smell that it has for about three or four weeks when it comes directly from the printer? That's chemicals, okay? Cardboard has odors in and of itself, so if you have a lot of that. So what we do is, we do carbon dioxide to, to see whether or not the ventilation system can remove these materials and dilute them. Next slide. If they're there. We did the survey, now ironically, I did hear some rumors that people said that the windows in the building were opened to screw up the ventilation testing. Now, the top number, 17 out of three, three areas had numbers that were above, that, that were above 800. The highest number was 1160. 2014, we came back, roughly the same amount of mater, number of rooms actually had, we found the same thing weighed 800. What you can't see down there is that the ventilation numbers for carbon dioxide were worse. 21 rooms had levels above 800. But, the thing is, is that the numbers were all under 1300 with the one exception of the day that we did back in 2006. So even with the ventilation system running, I'm using that in quotations, there was no difference whether the windows were open or closed. I'll tell you why. Next slide. And it's because, one of the things that we made in these recommend, in the recommendations is that we suggested that the teachers open the windows. It's part of the ventilation system. Now, this building, unlike many of your houses, most houses will have windows on all four, all four sides, so if you want to create cross-ventilation, you'll open the wind, window on the windward side, and you open up the window on the leeward side, and you let the air come through. Well, the building only has windows on two sides. It's one long hallway, the ends don't have windows, basically. So that the only way that you can create airflow and consistently throughout the building is to crack the windows and have the exhaust system, exhaust fans on the roof running. What we found were 10 out of 11 were knocked out last, two, two weeks ago. Very, very likely for a couple of reasons. One is, is that the brutal winter took out their fan belts, it's brutal on electrical circuits and electrical connections which deactivated these systems. If these systems were running the way that they're supposed to be, these numbers would have dropped. So, the thing is, is that to run a ventilation system, you have to have fresh air coming in and, and exhaust air leaving. That's one thing you really should, should understand, because if that's happening, then people's comfort in the room will increase. Next slide. So, if we have a unit ventilator that is being used for drying mittens, or for storage of books, what's the one thing you don't want to do if you want to aerosolize or create an odor? You don't want to heat it. So doing something like this is going to aerosolize whatever's on top of that unit. Also, the base of the unit is blocked by that, by that piece of toy. Or on the other side, the exhaust vent is closed. So if both are not, are blocked off, you're not getting, the system may be running, but it's not doing what it needs to do. Next slide. So, we both, we all know this. Next slide. One of the things that, that we talk about in the ventilation, with ventilation, is the expected service life of components of a system. Now roughly, the unit ventilators, and the other thing is, is that the system is controlled using a pneumatic system, basically air pressure. The problem with this type of system, if it starts to leak, the whole system goes down, you can't control the system. So that you can put money into repairing those unit ventilators to try to have them do what they're supposed to do, but they're going to turn off. What happened was, I was told, that when I got there, that the unit ventilators were turned on. As I went through the building, after I got past the fifth room, they were all off, because the pneumatic system was not working. The pneumatic system has a life expectancy of about 20 years. So, the, the boiler has around a life expectancy of the 30 years, and other parts of it roughly were looking at components of this building that are about three, two to three times their expected service life. I think the town of Spencer has gotten its money's worth out of these units, because you can continue to try to repair this stuff, it's just going to go out of calibration, because you have to replace the controls. Next slide, please. So, the thing is, is that one of the other things you want to do is to roughly have an equal amount of air coming into the room that's leaving, you want to have the rooms pressurized. If the system cannot have exhaust systems that are running or be properly controlled, you cannot balance the system. We would make this recommendation normally, but it would be wasted money to try to balance a system that's unbalanceable. Next slide. So, what we did, concluded was, the operational lifespan has been exceeded, balancing would not work, so that the, so next slide. The only thing that would work is to open the windows, basically, and run the exhaust system. That's what we recommended in 2014, that's what we're recommending now. Next slide. We did carbon monoxide testing. Actually, we'll go through, I'll go through particular first. This is the type of stuff that's in the air that can get into the lungs, cause respiratory irritation. We did this testing throughout each different, each different iteration that we're in the building. And most importantly, the number that we use to indicate that there's a ventilation issue with this is, the EPA established a number of 35 micrograms in the air as a problem. 2015, we don't have that issue, the year before, didn't have that issue. We had one room that had a problem previously. But that's almost 10 years ago. Next slide. We did carbon monoxide testing. We found it to be non-detectable, except for the first, first time we were here, non-detectable. One of the things, when I was first told about this issue, after, was it two weeks Tuesday? Was it, was called by, by your, by your folks from the school, the school department? First thing I asked was that the fire chief and the fire department come into the building to do carbon monoxide testing. Remember, that's the one thing that would make me run out of a building, because if you have carbon monoxide, that is a danger. They went in, they did the testing, they found nothing. They found nothing detectable. That was that Wednesday, I came in that, that Friday with the system operating. We found nothing that was detect, that was detectable, no carbon monoxide in the building either. Next slide. So, the thing is, is that there are environmental pollutants that happened in this building. Next slide. As I pointed out, that's the garage, that's the air intake. Don't know why, but it is. Next slide. That's what's actually in the garage. Now, there is a, on the right-hand side is a washer dryer with a dryer that's not vented. Now, the thing I thought that was being used in this case was the dryer was being, and the washer was being used to basically wash mops. I was told that it wasn't happening. The only way that I will believe that that happens is if these systems are gone. But the other thing is, what was stored in here, is the riding, is the riding lawnmower. And if that thing is activated and running, you can get carbon, you know, you can get vehicle, carbon combustion products inside the building. But in the winter, no. Next slide. And if that particular garage had this happen, the areas that would have been impacted were the art room and the library. The library had a spec, had a door in it that opens directly into the garage. One of the things that we recommended last year, and we'll recommend this year, is that that particular door frame be weather stripped, so that's rendered airtight, and just separate the garage from the rest of the building. Next slide, please. We did indicate the library is, is an interesting location, because that used to be a garage bay door that was blocked up, and this is, this one has entered into my, my collection that I do presentations, because not only was it sealed up, but see the, see the door rails on either side that were left in place? Not exactly what the washer was being used to basically wash mops. I was told that it wasn't happening. The only way that I will believe that that happens is if these systems are gone. But, the other thing is, what was stored in here, is the riding lawnmower. And if that thing is activated and running, you can get carbon, you can get carbon combustion products inside the building. But, in the winter, no. Next slide. And if that particular garage had this happen, the areas that would have been impacted were the art room and the library. The library had a door in it that opens directly into the garage. One of the things that we recommended last year, and we'll recommend this year, is that that particular door frame be weather stripped, so that's rendered airtight, and just separate the garage from the rest of the building. Next slide, please. We did indicate the library is an interesting location, because that used to be a garage bay door that was blocked up. And, this one has entered into my collection that I do presentations, because not only was it sealed up, but see the door rails on either side that were left in place? Not exactly what I would have recommended to do, but that is in and of itself, because of where it's located, it isn't watertight, and you would be, under driving rain circumstances, you can have water come into that, and unfortunately, plywood and paneling can, if they're wet, cause mold growth, or have mold growth. Next slide. Then, there are things stored in the building. Cardboard in and of itself has a potential for creating odors in and of themselves. These different boxes were not issued. They were basically brought in from the outside, from food stores. If you bring them from food stores, then you could have a potential for pests and other types of things that were stored in the boxes. So, we don't recommend doing this. Next slide. And there's other upholstered furniture, things of that nature, that can be in and of itself problematic if it isn't cleaned. Next slide. One thing that we did notice is that the unit ventilators do have, that is basically the heating pipe going into the crawl space. And you can see, the pipe is much smaller than the hole going into the crawl space. So, we recommended that these get sealed. This is very easy to do. You would use a fire-rated foam that you'd spray in, just like shaving cream. It would solidify, it seals it up, no problems, once that's done. And then, that would also eliminate, if there's a pest issue, a way for mice and other things to come up into the building. Next slide. This is actually a test hall that's in the flue of the furnace, that would, we would recommend that getting sealed up. When we found this, we pointed it out to the facilities folks, and they said they would fix it that day. Next slide. One other thing that we found is that I don't understand why the chimney for this building was so short, okay? On the roof, it was basically, originally, a stone chimney that was basically three feet tall, that they put an extension on. So, this is in and of itself an issue, because when I took that picture, I could smell the chimney outside, because instead of going up, it was going across the building and then dumping down. And so, it could potentially affect classrooms along that area. Next slide. One question we're asked for or about is mold in the building. Did we find any? Now, in order to grow mold, you have to have four things present. You have to have spores, but they're everywhere. You have to have the right material for it to grow on. What mold eats is carbon. So, if something came from a plant, or it came from, or it's derived from petroleum products, that's the type of thing that mold will colonize. So, you can't get rid of all the carbon things in the building. Right now, in this building, the things that it would colonize would be the carpeting, the seats, the ceiling tiles, things of that nature. So, you can't get rid of that. It has to have the right temperature, above 45 degrees Fahrenheit. It can colonize. The one thing that you can control for is water. It needs water. This stuff behaves just like a plant. You have to put a seed into soil, you have to give enough water. The same thing happens with mold, it just happens to get into something that will colonize. Next slide. So, the thing is, is that we would look for, instead of doing mold testing, because no agency credible, or group that sets standards, has set a standard for safe levels of mold exposure. It doesn't exist. So, that, the thing is, is that whenever we do this type of work, what we do is we look for the thing that's going to cause the problem, not the mold colonization. We look for where the water is, because that's where the mold is going to be. Because without water, it's not going to be there. So, that's what we look for. Next slide. So, that, then what we do is we divide the world into two different categories. Is it something that's porous, or is it non-porous? All these different things up here are non-porous, so therefore, they're unlikely to grow mold. The good news I can tell you about Lake Street School is it's built out of a tremendous amount of things that can't grow mold. You can't build that building these days, it's too expensive. And so, the thing is, is that when I start to look at this stuff, if you see mold on a surface like this, it's not colonizing the surface, it's actually whatever the dirt or debris is here is causing, so you end up cleaning it. Next slide, please. So, that, things that absorb water, this is the laundry list. So, gypsum wallboard, carpeting, paper, cardboard, potting soil, these all have carbon in them. Once they get wet, our suggestion is, is that you either have to start drying it within 24 hours. If that hasn't happened, then you throw it out. The more I do this work, the more I realize I've become my mother. Okay? Throw this out, clean this up, why is this way? So, we had a look at the building for this particular issue. Next slide. On all these, we didn't find anything that potentially would be a mold issue, with the exception of, why would someone carpet the library when it was a former shop? That is one I can't answer, because it's below grade, and that's something that we would not recommend. So, the thing is, is that we know that the building is going to be closed in June. We don't see any reason why this building cannot continue to be used. It is not going to be a source of either chronic disease or long-term health impacts that we can see. Now, some people in the building, they may have allergies, but that's something that's an individual medical issue that should be worked with, with the medical staff. Next slide. So, what we would, we made a number of different short-term recommendations to get you through until June. Next slide. So, one thing we would recommend is repair the exhaust vent fans on the roof. That would be a normal thing you would do. I think what happened was, is that this winter really beat them up badly and disabled them. Second would be to use the windows as a supplement. That's what we've recommended the whole time. You would do the same thing in your own house if this was the situation. Seal the holes around the pipes, seal the hole in the flue, operate the unit vents, and don't block them. I mean, this should get you through. And what's going to happen is, as the building is winding down, one thing that I'm going to suggest is, is that become my mother and throw out a lot of stuff. The one thing that government cannot do is to throw away paper. Trust me, you should see my office. So, next slide. That's who I am, that's who I work for, that's the phone number. Myself, or anybody from the staff, if we're there, we'd be more than happy to talk to you, to answer your questions. I've already talked to several parents over the course of the last two weeks. And that is our website. Now, the thing is, is that this report, and all the reports, have been available on our website since, this past one, just went up last, yesterday, I think? So, you can access it, you can read it, and you can find it through that particular web address. So, with that, do you have any questions? I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Mike, for that presentation. Before we enter into any questions, we have gone through the list that you recommended to us, and my understanding at this point is, everything has been addressed, other than the vents on top of the roof. So, we've got everything else that you've recommended to us to be done.
And, that's great. And I have made the offer to Town of Spencer that we're more than happy to work with you on any building, any school building that you would ask us to work on. This is what we do.
And we intend to take them up on that offer. There's some, we're planning to do the high school next, and then we will also do Wyre Village, Andy Shrofield, and Mr. Feeney has offered to do that from his company on behalf of the district. So, we've heard the report. Is there anyone that has any questions? I don't want repetitive stuff. Do you have any questions that Mr. Feeney hasn't addressed? This is your opportunity. Don't be afraid, come down.
Oh, please, I'm not that good.
So, what is the state criteria for following up on these recommendations? Because a lot of those recommendations were created in 2006, they were never followed up until recently, in the last year. Now, you're saying within, sorry to interrupt you, all of those recommendations have been fixed. Now, just, what is your role as a state person to come check back to make sure that everything is done?
What we do is that, as I said, we advise government concerning the conditions that we find. We make an open offer to come back to recheck the materials after it's done, but we do not have the right of entry, as do many agencies. So, we just cannot show up to a building and say, "Hi, we're here, we're going to do a reevaluation of the building." We have to be invited in. So, one of the things that we always do is to work with the local board of health, and the health agent, in any jurisdiction, because I'm located out of Boston, Mass. And, as you can probably guess, it took me a little while to get here today, and I do a lot of work in Western Mass. So, the thing is, we develop and we work relationships with the local health folks. And the thing is, is that usually what ends up happening, these folks know who we are. If you talk to them, usually the next call that they make is to call us. So, the thing is, is that we do this work, and we do it across the state, but there's only three of us doing this work. And as you can see, we do hundreds, about 120 was last year's job. So, we have to have people come back to us and say, "Hey, we got a problem." And then, we'd be more than happy to come back.
Now, I also noticed, I have heard a lot of reports from other towns. What would the criteria be to go to school down? What would you have to hit for an air quality to say, "Okay, you gotta get out of here"?
Let's see. In a couple of different situations, one was, or several have been walking into, let's say, a high school, and into the chemical storage area, and finding that there are materials that have aged to a point where they become explosive. So, that first thing we do is to call the fire chief and say, "Hey, we have a problem. Let's go look." I've been involved with carbon monoxide issues. So, that, in general, the numbers that are used for, let's say, evacuation purposes. Now, we have regulations for things like ice rinks, because the ice resurfcers run on gasoline or propane. And so, we recommend in that case, if the number's 125, get out, and to start ventilating. Now, the thing is, is that, we would never, that's way over occupational standards, and occupational standards do not apply to children. We would never say anything to endanger a child, particularly younger kids. So, EPA established a number of nine or above for carbon monoxide to indicate that there's an issue with long-term exposure. The thing is, is that if we find carbon monoxide in the building that's above what we find outdoors, I want to know what it is. And then, we go and track it down. A lot of these different things that we would look for, we would track down and try to find it. If we can't find it, then we would make recommendations. I mean, last year, I was involved with the school in Plymouth that had the custodian die on the job, and what we did in that particular case was to go in and do air testing to see if the building was safe to reoccupy. So, it's not real, it's really a case, so, in these set of circumstances, it's really a case-by-case basis, but we're going after things that we would have to get, or see something that would be like carbon monoxide levels that are bad. Carbon dioxide levels, on the other hand, I've never, in my entire career, ever have gotten a number over the worker safety standard. So, if that answers your question.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Yes, ma'am? Yeah, that's fine, sure.
I'm glad to hear you just done these reports. You're not familiar with what you felt was possible hazard for your kids. I mean, a box, a lot of stuff like that. I don't know if, you know, if there's dozens and dozens of classrooms that are going to be displaced and moved. Would it be your recommendation that we purchase new boxes?
If...
Especially with the elementary, we have so many.
Well, the thing is, is that you don't know where these things have been before. And, so, in general, whenever our agency has had to move, we would be given boxes by our moving company to do it. But, anything, we recommend, but don't know what's in the materials or where it came from. And that's a criteria for anything that you find. So...
What I didn't say in your report either today or in the one from last year, is that you said carbon monoxide in and of itself is not something to be concerned with. But, carbon dioxide, little bit, with very low humidity, with no fans that are working, with blocked fans that are working, are drastic things to be worried about, without kids in there. And, I do completely disagree, I am a fire技术 technician myself, have that for many years, completely disagree with your statement about mold can grow in that building. One take.
I think that...
One take.
Excuse me, ma'am? Excuse me, ma'am. You can, ma'am? Excuse, ma'am? Ma'am, if you want to continue, you're going to have to follow the procedure here.
...to actually test and put on medium plates mold or, because you could not have done it within the 48-hour limit.
Ma'am, I'm going to shut you down, and you're going to leave the room. Last call, you're going to go. Sit down. Listen, listen, this is...
...about this. The purpose of this meeting, the purpose of this, I'm going to have you removed from
the meeting, ma'am. The purpose of this meeting is to ask questions. You're not the professional that we brought here, okay? Vacate the room, ma'am. Vacate the room.
I do, I do, I have seen one range of one complete in a building, and...
In this building, ma'am? In this, in this building?
Thank you, ma'am. Take a seat or leave, please. Now, for future speakers that want to ask questions, this is an opportunity to ask questions. This is not, this is not a debate. We brought a professional here to answer questions, and the next, ma'am, you're going to leave, I'm going to have you removed from the building. I'm going to have you removed.
...that, and only being given the skeleton of the report...
Michael, please address the question.
I think that you are cherry-picking information out of the reports, because if you look at what is written in each thing, we go through a whole series of different issues. We examine the building for, like I said, the ventilation. We look at it for proximity combustion, we look at it for mold, and we look at it for respiratory irritants. And if you look...
Ma'am, do not speak again, or I will have you removed from the building. Where is the janitor? Where's the janitor?
I will be more than happy to debate this with you outside after the meeting.
Please call for a police officer.
What we did, we didn't, what we did is based on our experience, and it is extremely well-referenced in these reports. For instance, one of the things we always look for is the use of different types of chemicals for ammonia or chlorine, hydrochlor, bleach, because those in and of themselves are respiratory irritants. And with the ventilation system not operating, what we would recommend, not using them. Air testing for these materials would be rather useless, because certain things and certain chemicals can have an odor in them that are annoying. And that, if you look at the statutes that exist for how they define a public nuisance, a bad odor can be merely enough in order to have something fixed and removed. So, that's why we don't do air testing for specific chemicals, because, one, we don't do mold testing, and I would suggest, and the reason why, is because, one, mold testing in the air is very arbitrary. It depends on when you do the testing, what time of year, where you do the testing, the humidity conditions within the building, as well as the different materials that are potentially there. What we do is we go and look for the water-damaged materials that can grow mold. That particular building is built out of many different things that will not support mold growth. However, if you had read the 2014 report, and had read it thoroughly, we would have told you, and it indicated, that the garage was a major source of water damage, and a major source of potential mold, because of the lawnmower, because of the mop heads, because of the dryers, because of the shed that was sitting right outside directing water directly into the building. So, the thing is, is that we looked at all these different things. But, the thing is, is that if the stuff is not water damaged, it is not going to have mold on it. mold on it.
All right, thank you very much. Any, ma'am, you have another question?
Um, to hear your...
Ma'am?
Just a little, um, when you did look for the mold, did you look above ceiling, balcony, closet, or, the only reason I ask that is three, four years ago, there was a major water membrane in that area, everything saturated. Some fans were put in there to dry.
Right.
Unfortunately, there wasn't just mold in there.
And so, was that, and so, what were the materials?
It was the ceiling tubs.
It was the ceiling tubs.
And the dry...
And the dry...
But those were not replaced, but they're known.
There's not, in the li, in the library?
Library.
The library. Okay.
That's like a known spot because there's point water damage, it's not been...
But it was water damage that was, that was several years ago? Did this happen several years ago, or did this happen within the last, since 2014 January?
Before.
It was before that. The thing is, is that, but the thing is, is that I act, well, for one, it's not accessible easily. Secondly, is that the one thing that we saw in and around the library is that if I had to cherry, if I had to pick three things that potentially would grow mold in the library, one would be the plug, that's for the garage. The thing, that, that is not watertight, never was watertight, that we made a recommendation to take it out, repair it, do things with it because it was directly involved with the outdoors. It's not materials that was meant to be relatively repeatedly wet. Secondly, we questioned about whether or not there should be carpeting in a below-grade space in a building that was built in the 1950s because that floor has no vapor barrier in it. Secondly, is that part of the foundation was buried. It was never a concern when it was built whether or not water was coming into it because it was a shop. So, then what you do is you take something and you put in, you put in carpeting on a floor that was never meant to have carpeting. Now, the thing is, is that a lot of times what we have to do with carpeting is look at it, we have to see if there's any detective odors. One of the things that's real easy to do is to walk on it, and that will aerosolize mold that it can smell. But the other thing that we saw was the garage. And here we have something that is, is a situation that is right next to a place that's occupied by people that was never sealed properly. So, the thing is, is that what we do is that we recognize different things, and we tell folks, if we see this, remove it. Because the thing is, is that we do not do mold testing because there is no reason to do mold testing. If it's water damage, you take it out, you throw it away. The example that I use is, let's say you have an orange in your kitchen and it's changed color. Do you, A, take a sample of it back to a laboratory to put it into a Petri dish and then put it into a, into an incubator and then give it to a mycologist to put it under a microscope? Or B, do you throw it out? Throw it out.
The recommendation was to remove that rug in 2006, or 2007, nine years later.
I think the rug was, but I think the, but I think the rug was changed out before we saw it in 2014. Between 2006 and 2014 it was. Yeah.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Yes.
My question is, as a parent, we're all, I don't know about everybody else, but my son has been sick constantly. He's had 12 episodes or more. And my concern is to be from our nurse or, and we have numbers of how many kids have been out continuously sick constantly when they're at school.
Michael, did you address, did you look at these with the nurse?
In, I did talk to the nurse, but in general, when we look at sick rates, a lot of times they are not helpful. Because, and the other thing is, is that you have to remember that unfortunately, schools, if you ever want, there are three places that you never want to work in if you ever want to not, never have a virus. That is working with the general public, schools, and hospitals. So, the thing is, is that we had a particularly bad winter with extremely low humidity, and humidity also affects the mucous membranes, which dries them out, so that that can make people more susceptible to developing sinus infections and such. So, I think that it also, you also have to look at the timeframe as to what's happened. We had a very bad winter this year, and the thing is, is that you have a medical staff, and I did talk to them, I asked them if there was anything unusual that they could see. Now, the thing is, is that it's very clear, and it's something that you see in every school, you have a child who comes to school who's pre-infectious or sick. Within the next couple of days, you have a lot more kids sick. Every teacher here sees that. And so, the thing is, is that that's why we emphasize washing hands and hygiene.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Are you saying that mold can't grow on concrete or stone?
What I'm saying, what...
I've seen, I've been looking, I've also seen mold, the mold is quite old, glass mold.
Right.
They'll do.
Right.
I've seen these things grow on hard surfaces.
Ah, well, let me, let me, I think I did say this, on a hard surface, if you see mold colonization, it's something that can be readily cleaned. Because a lot of times you'll see, I see schools that have problems over the summer. Their floors get wet because of the way they're constructed, and then I get a call that there's mold growing up the sides of the doors. Those are materials that you are able to readily clean because the mold isn't colonizing the material in and of itself. So, you can clean it. It's the stuff that you can't clean.
So, if we know that there are water leaks in the library area, we know that it's what comes from the foundation, then if we know that these things happen, we know there's a water source, why would we test for mold to make sure it's not something that can't be cleaned?
Because the thing is, is that we would look at it to get the stuff, the first thing I would do if you have a water leak, get the stuff that can be wet and grow mold out of the way of the water leak. We wouldn't test it, we would just say, get this, and then, and then monitor the water leak because cement isn't going to be a thing that's going to be readily, be able to grow mold.
It's not like it's already passed, but there could be some kids under the carpet that have not been addressed or reused.
Well, the thing is, is that the, from what I just heard, the carpet was replaced after the flood.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was in the front, that was replaced after 2006.
Uh, anyone, did you have your hand up? No? Ma'am?
Yep.
I have a question. I saw that there was some concern about asbestos, but I didn't hear any report on any findings in that regard, and I would understand that schools were concerned about that, but I didn't hear any report regarding that, so I'll just relax.
Um, what I know, asbestos never came up as an issue with regard to the, to the, why we were asked to go back. There's another agency that actually does this type of evaluation. The thing is, is that back in 1990, Congress enacted what was called the AHA law, which required that every school inspect their buildings for asbestos to see if the material was in a condition that was breaking apart. Okay? Buildings can have asbestos and it not be a problem because if it's, if it's intact, it's not going to become aerosolized in the way that you become exposed to it is by inhaling it. So, what's required is that every three years, the school has to be re-inspected to look at the different things that contain asbestos. Now, the thing is, is that I'm not a licensed asbestos inspector or tester, but I've been around it to know, know it long enough, so been around in the field long enough to know if I see something like that, the first thing I would make as a recommendation to the school committee would be to have their asbestos licensed, E, licensee, yeah, come in to go have an evaluation at if we see something like that. I did not see anything like that through the building.
All right, thank you, Michael. Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir.
Really? Do you work for Commonwealth Massachusetts, correct?
Uh, yes. I work for the State Department of Public Health.
You do not work for Council of Massachusetts?
I, I do not work for either.
Paid by them?
I'm not.
You're giving my suggestion that the, that the school was safe, the rest of the school here?
Yes.
I'm pretty happy with that.
If I had to put it to you this... I'll put it to you this way. I get paid by everyone in this room every April 15th.
Michael, just for the benefit of everybody here, maybe you can explain the initials after your name.
Oh, yeah, I'm, no, actually, I'm a certified health officer, and I'm a pharmacist who went to law school. And how I got to do this, I would require a couple of drinks to tell that story.
Anyone else have any questions or comments or, yes? I'll get you next.
From a private, but if the school is safe, open for June, why is it being closed?
Yes, Dr. Crowe will address that.
One of the reasons, the school had been considered for closing, as I said at a previous meeting, had been considered for closing last year. There was actually a plan that was put in place that the principals had worked on with Dr. Malvey. And then at the last minute, Dr. Malvey said, you know, we'll hold off. The plan was always that, that was the potential to close that school because the cost of rehabilitating, as you've heard, all of these mechanisms are very, very old. It's a very old structure. The traffic, we could name you 100 different reasons why we know that it's the right reason to close it, but it was really because it's, it's with all due respect to the taxpayers that our enrollment does not support keeping five buildings open, number one, and number two, it was going to cost over a million dollars to go in and make the kinds of changes that we would need, and it would only get us back to sort of base level. It wasn't going to make it a new building.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it. What was it?
If, if the life expectancy of these buildings, the building, or two, three years past what's expected, why weren't they fixed earlier?
That's something you'd probably would have asked school committees 20 years ago. I don't know the answer to that. We've inherited a problem here that we're trying to address to keep it as safe as possible until the end of the school year, but the decision has been made and Lake Street School will be closed. Someone else had a question in here? Yeah, yeah.
I think you had said, I think you said all schools, you was going to say all schools, you mentioned this school?
No, he didn't.
Yeah, they've opted to come and do an inspection on all the schools for us. We're going to start with the high school and then do a schedule because the load will change as we move classrooms around and stuff, and this is an opportunity to be proactive so that we won't have those same questions like we've gotten tonight. This was done six or seven years ago and nothing would happen. So, we'd like to get a list, have every school inspected, and then have something that we can bring forward to the communities to support financially to get done.
If I can explain, one of the things that we do when we offer this is that we'll be doing this over the course of months, if not like a year and a half, because we do, we do get a lot of requests from around the state. And so, what we want to do is to go in, have a look at the building, provide a report so, and to give the school department enough time to address those concerns before we hit them with another thing. So that we're looking at this as a, as a way to both improve things, to recognize that something is there, but also to give adequate time. Because I wish I had a magic wand, I could turn that school back 50 years ago, okay, to the condition, to that condition, because then at least the system would be working. But that, that's not the reality that we have. So, I got to look at my, also, I have very few staff, and believe me, it isn't the age, it's the mileage.
Anyone else with a question or comment? All right, well, thank you very much, Mike, for your work and for your presentation here tonight, and I hope that that relieves some of the fears that, or questions that people have, but thank you very much.
Very kind.
Okay, moving on, the next item on the agenda passed out to members, the school committee meeting dates. This is the calendar to start for June. The blue boxes you see are the meeting dates. We've continued to schedule two meetings a month. Easier to cancel if we don't need them than to not have them and have to call for a special meeting. The X's on the calendar are days that school is not in session for whatever reason, but that is the calendar to go forward. I ask you to take it, look at it. When we come back to our next meeting, if there's any major conflicts with folks, we will certainly have the flexibility to move things along. All right, do you have the school calendar meeting? School calendar?
You want to go to that now?
Yeah, we might as well do it right now and get it. The superintendent has also put together the school calendar for next year. You have yours already. Dr. Crowe, would you go over that, please?
So, this is a draft version for you to review with the start date for teachers being the 31st of August, the first day of school for students being the 1st of September. Excuse me, with that Friday off that week in that first month, as has been the case this year. So, this mimics this year's calendar, except with the start date of the 31st. Moving through to October, anything that you see in orange, those will be the half-day for students, and then PD half-days for the educators. And then I believe that the rest is self-explanatory in terms of the holidays that are built in. So, to get us through to the end of the year, that would mean that, and we have just fewer information at the each, at the end of each box, you'll see the number of days in each month, as well as the total days already attended by the end of that month, so that you can, you know, so it's easier to keep the running tally. So, by the end of May, that puts us at the 170. So, we would then have 10 school days left to meet the 180 mark in June, which would mean we get out on the 14th if we use none, the 21st if we use five, and after that if we use more.
Okay, thank you. Again, if members would take this, look it over, and we'll revisit it at the next meeting if anyone has any questions. Moving on, our next issue is the first half of the plan to close Lake Street School. Dr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I've been meeting with, as promised, at a previous meeting, meeting with the principals and directors to talk about the phases of the plan for closing Lake Street School and reconfiguring the grades at each school, as well as all the considerations that we had to look at. So, just to give you the overall picture, in Phase 1, we looked at grade configurations, the staffing, the floor locations of the grades, and access to the facilities for students. We looked at start and end times for each of the buildings based on the grades. We looked at lunch and recess schedules, and we looked at the lockers and the cubbies and the adequate spacing in each facility. In Phase 2, we'll start getting more deep, just to give you the overview, to give you, we're going to be looking at drop-off and pickup procedures. We're going to be looking at playground configurations at each of the schools and what, what we will do with each of those spaces and where students will be. The supplies, equipment, and furniture and materials, the ones we, as you just heard from the previous presentation on the buildings, that it's important to throw things away if we don't need them, to declare surplus if we know that somebody else can use it but we don't need it. But we'll be looking at all the supplies, the equipment, the furniture, and the materials that will be moving into their new locations so that we can get that there and ready to, ready to move. We'll be looking at bus routes. We've already started to do that. We've been talking with the bus company and the bus coordinator in terms of who will be running on each bus and where they'll be going. There will be separate bus runs for each of the schools, just to make sure that you know that. I do know that Knox Trail and the high school were sharing buses this year. That will most likely not happen next year. And then we will deal with in Phase 2 also the specific locations of the classroom and teacher assignments. The last phase will go into the actual move and the logistics of moving things. We've already looked into getting various organizations to help us do the moves, as well as the trucks to get us to do those. And then, most importantly, are the welcoming events for each school because we'd like to give families an opportunity, not just parents, but the students as well, to come and see the new configurations and where they'll be going to class next year and have little events to welcome people at each facility. So, the grade configurations, which has now been, I'm putting forward to you for your finalization of this, David Proudie will remain 9 through 12. Knox Trail will be grades 5 through 8. Wyatt Village will be K to 4. And East Brook, East Brookfield will remain K to 6, and then the addition of preschool students. The start and end times, David Proudie will remain identical to what it is this year. Nothing will change at all. The other three schools all will go on to the 8:05 to 2:45. So, students can enter the building at 8:05, dismissal is at 2:45. I'd like to now ask each principal to come forward because I'm going, each one of them is going to talk about some of the planning that they've done for their individual buildings. buildings. And the first one I'm going to ask to come forward is Mr. Tomlin.
Good evening. As Dr. Crowe stated, we will be getting the 4 pre-K over our building. And what's going to happen is, if you look on the outside, you're looking at a building to the far right, is a primary part that has four classrooms. So that's where all the pre-K is going to go, and there's a separate entrance down there with the circular driveway. To do that, we're going to have a domino effect where the teachers already in those rooms are going to have to move, and a grade's going to go upstairs. So with the final configuration, we'll have downstairs will be pre-K through 2, and upstairs will be grades 3 through 6. And I'm anticipating that, just based on the pre-K full-time student numbers, that our lunches are going to be remaining the same. We'll probably have two lunches and two recesses. So I don't anticipate any of that changing at this time. And that's the general.
Any questions for Mr. Tomlin? By the board members? No?
Okay, thank you.
You have a question, Mike?
This might be more for Dr. Crowe than Mr. Tomlin. But has the collaborative been notified yet? And what's the timeframe on that?
I'm waiting for the finalization from the committee that they've approved this plan, so that we can notify people.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Who's next, Dr. Crowe?
Ms. Dammel.
Good evening. Again, we've collaborated with Superintendent Crowe, Mr. Suter, Mrs. Bowalnick. We've had a lot of conversations to consider all the aspects of the transition thus far, also along with fellow principals. The grade locations at Wyatt Village School, which will now house K through 4 with your approval, the grades K and 1, in order to keep them as close in proximity as possible, and also as close to the proximity to the cafeteria, would be located on our lower level. The main level, which when you walk in the front door is the actual main level of the building, will be grade 2, our administrative offices and support and special services. And the upper level will be grades 3 and 4. The lunches will run. We currently have three lunches. We plan to continue with three lunches at this point. Lunches would begin at approximately 11:00 a.m., as they currently do, and end at approximately 1:00 p.m. The first lunch would be for grade 4. Grades 2 and 3 would share a second lunch. Grades K and 1 would share a third lunch. Receses would be held for each group either before or immediately following their lunch. And recesses would be separated for grades or grade spans of one year maximum. Play area will be age and developmentally appropriate when we work at that, which is the next stage. We did also check lockers and storage areas. We have a sufficient amount of lockers for the student capacity. For the primary floor, lower lockers have been found to have multiple hooks to store coats, et cetera. Cubbies in classrooms would be utilized to store lunchboxes, snacks, things of that sort. Thank you.
Any questions for any board members?
I do have a question.
Angela?
Would the littlest kids be having the latest lunch? Is that because, do they get a snack time?
Yes. They usually would have a snack earlier in the morning. Yes. And it would be spaced out.
I just wanted to check.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Heather? Will bathrooms need to be modified to accommodate the littlest kids?
Not to my knowledge. The bathrooms are sufficient in size and comparable with what we have in East Brookfield as well.
Any other questions? Okay, Dr. Crowe, who's next? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowel, talk about Lake Street's closing and the plans for the teachers.
Good evening. What you may or may not know is that I have had previous experience in moving an entire school from one building to another. So that was very helpful when we decided to do, make this change. And I'm going to do everything I possibly can to make that transition as easy as it possibly can be for, for staff and students. Our staff members have already begun collecting boxes and packing their things that they're not using already. We have a color-coded system for packing boxes, so that our belongings will get to the right place. And the last thing I want to say is, we are really pleased that the instructional staff and the students will move together, and will be together in the new location. We feel really, really good about that. So, thank you.
Any questions from any board members? For Joanne? All right, Dr. Crowe?
Mr. Bayshant is the fortunate one who has no changes at all. But Mr. Bayshant is going to talk later on about something we're pretty excited about at the high school, which is the addition of some advanced placement classes, the MEMC grant. So that will be his contribution tonight.
All right, Mr. Bayshant, you're up next. High school AP classes.
Sorry that we're coming back to ask for two new courses to be approved. However, through the MEMC grant, the whole premise was to increase our AP offerings at the high school. So we were going to offer three, and we've narrowed it down on their advice to two courses. They thought three was a little bit much to take on the first year. So we're going to offer environmental science, and you have the description there in front of you. It's basically about the ecosystem. And we're going to offer statistics. So if any of you ever had statistics courses, mean, median mode, HOJIVE, graphs and whatnot. But that's, I just need your approval, so that we can get that into our program of study, and also get it on the sheets when students pick their classes for next year, so we can get our numbers to see how many, you know, how many sections we're going to be able to run.
Did you, did you mention the AP chemistry?
AP Chem, we're going to put on hold.
Oh, you're putting that on hold?
Right. He thought it was too much to take on two sciences. So it's okay. I'm just going with his advice.
Okay. Any question from board members? Otherwise, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, and I'm super excited about this.
Thank you.
It's very important to provide our students with these opportunities. I know that my AP English class was the reason I did great in college. It's just so important.
And these courses are going to be open to juniors, too. So we're going to try to get the underclassmen to start a little, a little more rigor.
It's a motion to approve.
Okay, so a motion from Angela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Heather. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. You can stay right there, Mr. Bayshant.
Sure.
Graduation. We haven't accepted it already. All right. We also need a motion to accept the plan for the MEMC grant?
No, for the, the plan for moving Lake Street, the grade configurations.
You want to vote for the first section, right? Superintendent would like a vote for the approval of the first section of the plan for the Lake Street move. Is there a motion?
Can you just repeat again the specifics? I'm sorry, got kind of lost in the discussion.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
So the grade one, I'm asking you to approve, just so that we can move forward into the second phase, is in the first phase, keeping David Proudie as is, 9 to 12. Knox Trail being 5 to 8. Wyatt Village being K to 4. And East Brookfield Elementary being K to 6, as it was, plus preschool.
All right. Is there, is there a motion for the chair for that?
So moved.
motion by Mr. Cludie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bayshant?
Graduation?
Yep.
Graduation is moved back to the high school. It's going to be the last Thursday in May, May 28, 6:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. That's the, that's the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, dues for AASA, ASCD, and Mass do superintendent's induction program. Need a motion, Dr. Crowe?
Chairman?
Yes?
There was no, there was no report for Knox Trail, as far as the grade.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Ms. Nelson is very ill and will be out all week, so I'll be asking her to present at the next meeting the details of her building. Thank you for bringing that up. I'm sorry. Forgot.
We need a motion for these dues? Or is that just a notification?
It's just a notification.
All right. Next item, enrollments. If those were in your packet. School newsletters. Any questions on?
I had, I'm sorry, I had a question on the enrollments. There was a huge spike in March at one of the schools, and I was just wondering, is there, what happened there? It was, it was a very large, it was like 20 new students. And was that just, was that the thing that Missy was talking about, where it was different data places? We're getting it from a better place now? Is that what that was? Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Anybody else? If not, hearing for visitors. Anyone wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about, is there any thought here into the continuation of the before-after school program?
Yes, there has. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Chipped right in. Yes, there has. It's one of the, one of the things that we will consider when we get to Phase 2. Once we figure out what room students are going to, we have that all solidified, then we're going to be looking at what are the before and after-school programs going to be in each building, because we need to accommodate students that are now moving to a different location.
Does it go to yet, for Knox Trail? Have it turned to a room yet? Because that pretty much.
We don't know if there will be one at that school, but there will be opportunities for the students that go to Knox Trail. You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Do we, we are to start junior high school as a block, and given to how that would affect the sports programs there for the 7th and 8th graders that currently play on sports teams?
Dr. Crowe?
Yes, it has. And that's one of the things that Ms. Nelson will be talking about when she makes her presentation. It's one of the things they discussed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Do you understand that these schools have long talks through kindergarten, first school, or would Knox, Wyatt Village be sharing?
No, we, right now, we do not. We have not finalized those talks yet. That'll be in the second phase. But we do not anticipate mixing up the very youngest with the oldest. We don't anticipate doing that. We anticipate keeping them right to their own school. Did you, maybe Mr. Suter wanted to address that?
No.
Not yet.
Yes, sir?
Is there any thought to, with all the teachers moving from certain schools, under the recommendation from the state, he said you shouldn't store anything, that anything that had food in it, boxes, alcohol, meat, anything like that. Has the board or superintendent confidently authorized the money for these teachers to get the boxes, the moving supplies to remove these materials from the schools without?
Dr. Crowe?
Now that we've heard from Ms. Defini tonight, I think we'll certainly have to consider that, based on what he told us tonight. Yes?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
I think Knox Trail and I are going to have to at Wyatt Village. Their buses are going to be coming in the same timeframe, but they're going to be getting on different buses?
Well, I don't know if Mr. Suter, Mr. Suter's been dealing with the bus company, but the simple answer is yes, but they won't be exactly at the same time, because they can't be. They'll have to figure out the routes. That's what our transportation company does. They figure it out so that people aren't...
Go off the numbers, right?
Right.
Time frame, that my oldest, the meanest going to school and getting off to school.
Right.
Sounds go by.
Right.
Thank you.
Yet one of the things we wanted to make sure that we did, and I had, I had talked about this at a previous meeting again, is that one of the concerns that was brought forward, one of the things I heard very clearly from parents, is that they didn't, they didn't, the youngest students in the building are really dictating the start times, as opposed to the oldest students.
Well, that's fine. I just...
Yeah. No, but I just wanted to let you know, that's why we did that.
It needs to be a drop-off or a pickup.
Right.
Now I'm back to the same thing, same, all the same time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment? Yes?
Regarding the schools, will you increase the number of children in each class, or you have enough classrooms for them to have normal size, like kids in the class?
Dr. Crowe?
The staff and students are going together, so there will be no difference class-size-wise than if they had stayed right where they were.
Thank you. Anyone else question or comment? Yes?
Kind of a hearing or surprise, and David Proudie, and kind of, kind of back to the air quality thing. 2005, that David Proudie air quality was done because of some illness in the building. How can you assure us that there's going to be money budgeted to fix those ventilation systems to improve the air quality over there? Because the air quality of David Proudie in 2005 was three times worse than Lake Street was. And I just want to have some assurance that he should return in long-term recommendations that were put out in 2005, and looked at before, because he said it may be a few months or whatever before he gets back to reassess that air quality. Are you guys going to look at that '05 report?
Dr. Crowe?
Recommendations and kind of put that?
We got it. We got it. Dr. Crowe?
Thank you. Yes. Simply put, Mr. Ether is actually heading up a capital committee. And one of the things that we're very, we're very, just focused on right now is not doing this again three years from now. You know, we're, we're trying to be proactive, and we're trying to be in a preventative mode, so that we look at what we need to fix now. I talked to a parent tonight right before the meeting, that, you know, are we going to be sure this doesn't happen again? Well, I can't give you 100% guarantee, because a lot of it comes down to the money, and we're going to have to pace ourselves to fix some things. But we do have to get onto this cycle of replenishment, refurbishing, replacement, upgrading, because otherwise, we will be back in this place, and we might have four schools that are identically needing things all at the same time. So we do have to get on that. I don't know if...
Yeah, we, we've had a capital meeting at the, at the high school already, and Mr. Bayshant showed us a lot of the issues that need to be addressed. And we're currently, we're going to schedule a meeting. The next meeting will be at, is planned for Knox Trail, and we're just going to work our way down from there. But I hope to speak with the other members of the subcommittee, and we're going to get a date scheduled, and we'll get it up on the website. We'll get it out to you. Because these are, they're open meetings. People are welcome, you know, see what's going on in the, in the schools.
Thank you, Mike.
...rid of two and a half overrides, because they've all failed. But I know a few years ago, there was a group, several people in this building were in that group to renovate, flash, rebuild David Proudie. Is there any, I know that was kind of scrapped during the naming, you know, budget debauchery, I guess we'll call it. Is there a plan?
That's something that will be addressed sometime in the fall. We're not at that point right now. Yes.
Great idea.
Yep. Yep. Anyone else?
There's a question right there.
I'm, I'm, I'll get back to you. Yes, go ahead.
Can I understand correctly that the subcommittee for Knox Trail, you and I, was rescheduled, will be scheduled, have not been rescheduled yet?
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that a little bit louder, or come down to the mic?
If the subcommittee, that would walk Knox Trail, you and I, do I understand it correctly that they have not yet, and that they are to be rescheduled still?
Mike?
Yes. There was a, there was a snafu on the website with the dates, so we, we had to cancel it, and we're going to reschedule it. I'm going to, I'm going to talk with the other subcommittee members. We'll try and get something for you probably next week. But we'll get it up on the website as, as soon as...
Yes, go ahead.
Both are open to the public as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there results reported on the website from those happening?
I didn't hear the question.
Eventually, there will be, I think. But we won't, we're trying to go school by school and list all the issues, and we, then we need to prioritize those. But we do plan to have a plan. But this is work we're going to be doing for a few months. So the comprehensive plan won't probably come until, into the next, next year's school year. But, but that is our goal, is like Dr. Crowe was saying, is to set things up so that we have maintenance schedules in place, so that we know the desperate needs that we have to take care of in the next year to two, three years, the things that we can wait till five years from now, the things that can wait till 10 years from now. But that we need to always be doing that, so that we don't come to this place again, where we have this whole school that hasn't been updated in 20 years.
Did you have another question, ma'am?
First, David Proudie and then Knox Trail.
Well, our, sorry. I think that we're going to look at all the schools, but we absolutely, I think we all understand that David Proudie's the oldest of the schools that we're still working with, and it has had the least attention to it in the recent past. So we all anticipate that most of the major priority, emergency things that we'll be doing will be at that school.
And those are all posted on the website. There are open meetings to the public that can, could come. Someone else had a question in here somewhere?
Thank you.
Yes?
Do you want to start time of preschool?
Dr. Crowe?
I did not. Mr. Tomlin, Ms. Bowel?
Currently, the start time will be somewhere between 8:30 and 8:45. That's to be determined. Okay?
And just like, should you give, preschool is going to be, you have to learn for 4th graders, up to that age?
Up through 2nd.
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 All set? Yes, sir? I'll say. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, is this just public input for just the school or can it be general public input?
No, you can, you can bring up something.
I would like to bring up the fact that this school board has closed two schools. I believe, the people in this room agree that they have saved a tremendous amount of district. And I think this school board, close this town to, in the next budget year, since the budget this year that's going forward, so that the outside budget, push these overrides forward in order to show them that, show that the education is the true goal of this board and not appeasing the downhill, so to speak.
Yeah.
Give you that. And the fact that we showed up, supported overrides and tried to push people to get out there and vote. This board, the big spot where you guys are blacked, and Dr. Malby Black was getting out there and getting the support of these parents. And if you get parents involved, which you have the power to do, you have the ability to go home to do what and control what goes on in this town, by just getting people to show up at the meeting, letting people know how important coming out and voting is, which didn't happen at these previous overrides that had five-year old overrides. I would rather have this board sit up here and say, we've had 105 failed overrides. But God damn it, we tried.
Yeah. I'm going to defer at this point to Member Cludia because I think he will give our position on this.
I would only say, I would agree with you in the sense that we've supported education at this board. We put forth budgets and we've put forth plans to the community, and they've turned it down. I've used, I, hold on, hold on.
Listen, you had an opportunity to speak. He's going to answer. We're not going down that road again, okay?
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I could, a lot of people spoke this evening. That's great for public input. I really appreciate it. But I don't know what happened to our policy of them coming to the mic. Because I would have really appreciated being able to hear most of these people, and I couldn't. So if we could start using the microphone so we can hear and the people at home can hear because it is broadcast on cable television, so. But getting back to your point, we've put forth budgets that we felt were sound educational budgets for the district. And if one parent of every child in the district would have supported education and came out and supported that, we wouldn't be talking about it because it would have passed. But we don't have the support of the parents. From my own personal opinion, as a board member personally, it's not my job to go out and rally the troops to support education. My job, hold on. It's not my job to go out and get parent groups to believe in what I believe in. They're your children in the district. This district educates your children. My children went through this district. I supported education. I still support it. I voted for every one of those overrides personally. But I'm not going to go out and do the rah-rah bit. I'm going to do it here at the board level, and I'll stand by what I say here at the board level, and I'll support those. But we cannot, what you said is incorrect. We cannot, at the board level, promote these overrides from the board. We cannot copy paperwork and send it home. That's against the law. We can't do that. Those have to be individual groups outside of the political arena of this board. But I agree with your point. The parents, the taxpayers, the stakeholders, they have to be vested in education, not just in Spencer, in both district communities. They have to want to pay for the education. Because after this year, I said it during the budget discussions, we were able to close Lake Street. It's a smart move to close Lake Street. There's no sense in carrying a school that you don't need. Even after we do the redistribution of students to the other facilities that we currently have, there'll still be space in those facilities for students. Doesn't make sense to have excess baggage. It would have happened last year. It was a push to have it happen last year. Last year came and went. It was the right thing to do this year. We were faced with losing teachers, educational staff. Didn't make sense. And I'm sorry for the way I sound. I have, I have a cold. But, you know, that's my point. I'll support education from this board. I'll support the overrides. But it's not my job to get the people to the ballot box.
Thank you, Mr. Suda.
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Cludia's comment. I think he's right. I think the committee's, the committee's position should be to put forth the best thing that's right for education. I think it's incumbent upon the administration, the superintendent, myself, and everybody in the Blue House to educate the community as to what the committee has done or what they propose to do and to get that information out to the public. I don't think we've done a very good job at doing that lately. I think if you took a look at the website, you'd realize that it's, it doesn't even function. So one of the things we've been working with Mr. Torrey, and we're in the process of implementing a new website. We want to use that to launch information to the parents. You'll be able to go there, get information about the schools, about, you know, different agendas that we're going to put, try to put forth and improve the schools. And you can sign up for emails on particular issues that you're interested in. But we have to do a better job of informing the community. And I think when we do that, hopefully, you know, the votes will follow along with that. We recognize that, and we're going to, we're going to work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Still on to citizens' input. Anybody else with a question or comment? Okay, seeing none. Board comments, suggestions for future agenda topics? Anybody have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludia?
I would like to get on one of our future agendas, and I don't have a problem if it's after the budget's complete. But I would absolutely like to get on the agenda, the setting of the goals and objectives for the superintendent for the upcoming year. I think that's important, that we get that done over the next couple of months. Like I said, if we want to wait till after the budget, it's your discretion. Let's just get it on.
Within the next meeting or two, I'll have it on.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to put on, I know we got a lot of balls in the air. But at one point, just maybe two years ago, we did spend a quarter of a million dollars looking at the Met Tower and the power project. And again, that's something, I went to Holy Name, you know, we get all of our NEDF for free and we recouped about 80,000 bucks last year. That's something that, it is an initial investment, but it's something that will continually pay us back dividends. And we already did all the upfront work. Unfortunately, we were out of time. As that lady up there said, you know, with a different administration, things fell apart. We couldn't move forward. But all the reports that we have on that Met Tower are still valid and good. The wind didn't change up there. So that would be something I'd like to consider at one point.
It might be wise. We may pass that report on to the capital subcommittee and let them entertain that as part of their project. Anyone else have anything? The chair has a couple of things to address. All members received an email within the last four or five days from a person that heads up the Spencer Little League in regards to concerns about the facilities being used. I know Mr. Cludia spoke with her. Other people have. The superintendent has. The person that's responsible for the use of the facilities has. We've been more than willing to give access and all the access that's needed to fields for practice. There's district policies that are in place that have to be followed as well as requirements from our insurance carrier. And the first two hurdles on those, you have to provide at least a million dollars of liability coverage, a certificate of insurance with the school district listed on it. They have failed to be able to bring that forward to us. There also has to be a statement from the organization that the proper query checks have been done for those adults that are involved in working with the program. Not individual queries, just a letter and affidavit from the organization that this has been done. And until those things are done, it's impossible for us to move forward. Now, we were told a lot of things. We were told that we have the, that they have the insurance, and why can't you just let us do this? We're covered under the national umbrella. And so I took it upon myself to make some calls. And I called the International Little League down in Williamsburg, Pennsylvania. And they referred me to their office in Britton, Connecticut. And there I found out that, no, we don't have insurance. And the organization doesn't have insurance, and that's why they can't provide it to us because they haven't paid the dues that were due on January 1st. Now, the explanation that we've got is kind of confusing because we're told, well, we have a policy, starts on January 1st, expires on December 31st. Well, then that's fine. Give us a copy of the policy. Well, the answer is, we can't give you a copy of the policy because we don't pay bills until June 7th, and the Little League will not give us a certificate of insurance until those are paid. Well, the answer is, from the Little League office themselves, these things were due and expected to be paid on January 1st. Everyone is aware of that. But the caveat to the whole thing is, they told me at Little League that they will not allow the organization to hold one day of practice or a game under their name until they have the proper insurance. So for all those folks that have been stirred up by all the social media stuff and all the mistruths and half-truths that have been told that the superintendent and this committee is against sports, and they were against the Little League, we want to dismantle all this stuff to drive kids out of the district, is totally untrue, unfounded, and an out-and-out blatant lie. The facts speak for themselves. If you don't want to take my word for it, pick up the phone, call the Little League, call their office in Britton, Connecticut, and they'll give you the same information that I gave you. As soon as that information is provided to us, and the policies require seven days before any use for the insurance, 14-day request before you want to start the use, all they have to do is bring it to the superintendent's office, and I can assure you that it will be approved. Every member of this board, including the superintendent, supports sports for all our children. And it's just ludicrous that this is the level that this stuff gets to because of personalities. And it really needs to stop. And folks really need to make the right calls and get the right information and not be led down this primrose path of anti-supervisor and anti-school board mentality. It really needs to end. Anyone else have anything? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. King. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cludia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.